We have a shared vision in the Fernridge School District, provide excellence for every student so that each will reach their greatest potential. We are always happy to have parents and other community members at our meetings. Thank you to the members of the public who have joined us. As a reminder, school board meetings and work sessions are meetings of the board held in public, providing an opportunity to observe the board's discussion and actions. In order to conduct official board business, we ask that the audience be respectful and refrain from questions, comments, and unnecessary noise while the board conducts the meeting. Also, please note that all board meetings are live streamed and posted on the school board area of the district's website. We will start off with our citizenship award, Mr. Cooper.
Yeah, of course, Cooper from the options program. Zach Phil is on the end down here is our options outstanding student for February. Zach came to options in 2022 so that you can have the opportunity to compete in BMX racing?
No.
Motocross, thank you. Racing events that involve travel away from school. He continued in our program this since that time and has consistently finished classes and passed with a high GPA. He's ahead of schedule, graduate next year, and is among the top five students in terms of attendance in options. Probably didn't know that. We are proud of Zach, sent him to the board as an options model student. Thank Zach.
And if you all don't want to say it's up to you, but we don't. All right, there's no public comment tonight, so we'll move into monthly items. Um, approval of the last minute board meeting minutes. And questions on those or?
By move that we approved the minutes from January twenty second of twenty twenty four.
A motion of second to approve the minutes from January twenty second of twenty twenty four, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Votes, motion carries. All right, we'll move into our business office, Kwanah is online, I'm guessing.
I am, good evening. Can you hear me? Okay. As of February first, our in district enrollment was at thirteen hundred, which is five fewer than the previous month. Um, according to our budgeted numbers, we are down forty six for in district enrollment. At the elementary level, we are down forty. At the middle school level, we are down by five, and at the high school level, we are down by one. We also have eight more out of district placements than what was budgeted. And that is all I have on the enrollment report unless the board has any questions.
Any questions? All right.
I, I do want to make an observation that um, that the needed classrooms are a lot larger than, or the number of students in the needed classrooms are much higher than big students in Almira Elementary classrooms, especially at the upper grade levels. Just an observation.
All right, moving on to um, the general fund revenue and expenditure report.
All right, this is our general fund revenue and expense report as of January thirty first. We have received eighty percent of our budgeted revenue, slightly higher than the amount we received at this time last year. Uh, we have spent forty five percent of our operating expenditures, which is comparable to the forty three percent spent by this time last year. Um, there was nothing too exciting happening in January. I did want to mention that next month, our licensed staff have the option to receive their triple pay in March, instead of in June. So you will notice a significant increase in our payroll salaries and benefits line um, on this expense report. On the March thirty first uh, financial report. Um, also, I wanted to mention that unfortunately, like many, many other districts, we are still waiting for our official twenty two, twenty three audit report, um, which has led to another postponement of the supplemental budget. Um, I am considering proposing the supplemental budget next month. Um, even if we haven't received our final audit report, um, but I need to do a little bit more research on that. Before I choose that route. And that is all I have on the financial report unless the board has any questions.
All right, take Kwanah.
Yep.
This is part of our actions. There's a motion of second to approve the general fund revenue and suspension report. Any discussion? Hearing none, all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any votes, motion carries, five to zero. Um, moving on to reports, we've got Elmar High School tonight.
Right. Um, I love to take pictures with my cell phone. So that was one morning when I drove into the parking lot and the seniors had just painted the rock and I thought it was really cool that the sun was coming up. It seemed like a new beginning over that rock. Good evening, Board Chair Born, Board and Superintendent Carpenter. Uh, I am here as a first year principal at Almira High School after thirty years of service in another district, and I just want to say how um, amazing that Almira High School is. So when I came in, I had memories of when I graduated, which why am I going to say how long ago that was? But it was a long time ago and um, it is just, some of it is exactly the same and yet there's so much more that has started and is just bubbling over of excitement with kids doing new things. And so I'm really excited to share that today, so if I could go to the next slide. Uh, this is a reminder, so Mrs. Marshall in December came and talked about the, the five items that are in black. Uh, daily attendance, and she talked about how that is um, different from regular attenders, and that is an Oregon uh, Department of Education definition. So our daily attendance is around, it's over ninety percent. So if you could just walk into a school and like you noticed, there's a bunch of kids in a classroom. This would be the number of kids that are in our school every single day divided by the number of um, school days that we've had, so it's over ninety percent. Uh, regular attendance though is different. It is if I were a student and um, at the beginning of the school year, I went hunting and then while I was hunting, I got really bad poison oak and then from the poison oak, I had to take medicine that I was allergic to and I missed maybe three weeks in a row. I would be, I would not be a regular attendant, a tender at the beginning of the school year because I'd missed fifteen days and you divide it by the number of days that we've had so far. Um, so as we get further into the year, today is day one hundred of the school year. So this would mean that if you're a regular tender, you only miss ten days so far this year. So basically, as we get further through the year, um, you can miss seventeen days and still be a regular tender, so most of our kids are there. Most of our kids are just fine by this, by the standard. I would think most of our kids attend more. Um, ninth grade on track is important to keep track of, so our ninth graders come in, they're used to their grades, not really counting in middle school, like it was important to learn, but not, none of those grades except for maybe a math grade would have carried over into high school and counted on their transcript. Now they do. So if we get a kiddo who um, finishes the first semester with three Fs, we are monitoring, we are meeting and we are talking about that kid because that kid is now not on track to graduate. You um, at our school, you need six out of seven credits in the first semester and the second semester in your ninth grade year to be on track because um, that would count as six credits towards graduation and you need twenty four. So that is one of the markers that we're looking at every year. And then a four-year graduate is just like you would think, you start in freshman year, you finish in senior, you got twenty four credits all in the right spot and you graduated. A five-year completer means that it took you five years, you could get a modified, you could get an extended, which usually means that you've got a special arrangement. Um, and maybe it's a special education arrangement. You could go and get your GED, which um, we don't do at our school, but you can go to LCC or Westland Tech. So a five-year completer is different because um, you, it isn't necessarily a diploma. It's going to be some other piece of paper perhaps that says that you, you met a standard, but it wouldn't be exactly the same as the four-year graduation. So in purple up on the top, those are the four um, pieces of data that we're trying to improve this year. And uh, you heard about it in December, so this, this is kind of a review. Um, and then I'm going to tell you how we're trying to get there. So on the next screen. These are all pictures that I took, which um, it was really hard to go into my camera to pick. But while we're looking at this and I'm going to go and talk about a couple of things, Michelle's going to hand up, hand out um, profiles and we work on these profiles in homeroom. And so if you have a kiddo, a grandkid, uh, someone who might say we never talked about that, you could say they were profiled and they're going to go, oh, maybe we did that in homeroom. So we do talk about it, okay? So I want to point out that top in the middle, on the far left is Brett and Brett Heiburger is our state champion in wrestling. And that happened on Friday evening and so it's brand new for us, but um, just celebrate him. And then the rest in the bottom, um, I don't know if you know that, but Superintendent Carpenter volunteers a lot for us. And that's him um, trying to get that girl water because she was, it was a hot day that day. And um, he was greeting each kid as they crossed the finish line. So um, next slide, please. So the board has a copy of this, the, the audience does not, so. Um, what we do is we work through this and if you start with us as a freshman, yours is going to be filled out as we go. If you show up as a junior in homeroom, you're going to get one of these. If you lose it, which you shouldn't, because it should stay with your homeroom teacher. And then uh, we'll, we'll give you another one. There could be some shaming in that because that would take a lot of um, effort on your part to lose it, but um, I'm kidding, we don't shame. Yeah, we do not. So um, a kid would get this and they would look at it and they would know very clearly that in your freshman year, you need to, social studies is global studies, A and B, so that's semester one and two. You have to pass your science class. Math is left blank because some kids come in and they're in algebra and some come in and they're in geometry. So it depends on their placement right there, that's why that one's blank. But you should pass all of those to meet uh, the twenty four credits that some are in this, this really tight package that you're going to take this class, this class, this class, and then we have an elective file. So those top ones are the package that each kid has to have. And then if by chance they might um, not pass their math class, then we might hook them up with Forrest. He lets, gives them an, another chance at options to, to gain back that credit while they're still working through their regular schedules. So um, what's important about this is that kids know what they need to do. They know they need to get a D or better. And if they're going to college, they need to get a C or better. So um, this lines out exactly what they need to do and then it, um, this is the only one I have up there, Michelle Smith. So if you open up the middle parts, this helps kids when they want to apply for jobs, want to apply for college, want to apply um, for a job shadow and it gives them the ability to easily fill out a resume because they're keeping track as they go. So if you're a National Honor Society, you have to have volunteer hours. This is the place where you would record this and make sure that um, your supervisor okay's it. And um, this is half with information by the time they hit their senior year. I should have had Gavin bring because it's, they're just filled out like, and they're not as pretty as this, they're worn because the kids have worked on them. But it, what it does is it makes sure that um, the homeroom teacher, the student and their counselors know where they are. And if you flip to the backside, uh, we just had our BAFs the day where we had an expert come from the community, I don't know if you've heard all the bad reports about filling out your BAFs and that there's hiccups in it. So the, the um, expert from the field came in and got people started and um, the parents who showed up were very thankful that someone was there to walk them through it. I feel like that's how I am with taxes every year, so next year when I have to fill it out, I'm probably just going to have to find that woman and have her do it on a, like a tutoring thing. So on the very back one, this is towards the end and it talks about colleges you might want to apply to. And then um, scholarships you might want to get. We do know that some kids don't have any plan on going to college and that, that would be um, something that we would work on too with our CTE programs. And that's not necessarily on here, but we do know that some kids don't have plans to go to college. So this is called the personal educational plan and profile. And if you have a student, you might ask them if they fill their out, fill theirs out. If they're a freshman, you should get a blank look because they haven't done it yet. It's not this Wednesday, but the next one, and then the, then everyone will have seen it at least once. All right, next slide, please. All right, so Oregon Department of Education, they report out every year, it goes to Superintendent Carpenter. I know that he sends out emails and tells you when it comes in, but this is just the Almira High School piece of it. And these are the four goals that we were talking about on the first page. So um, last year, which is twenty two, twenty three, I, it is a, some, it's a, it's a nice little um, piece of information because it gives you a lot more data than just this. But eighty five percent of our ninth graders were on track and you can see that we've increased that over the last three years. Um, to me, this is data that um, is different because that, that twenty twenty one, we're just coming out of the COVID precautions and kids weren't necessarily on campus. And we didn't get lots, lots of face-to-face with them, so it's seventy-two, but I would guess that if they were doing business like we did last year, it would be higher. So um, of the kids that graduated on time in twenty twenty one, it was easier to graduate. So the state, if you remember, said, we missed a bunch of school because uh, we, we just took you out of school and we didn't give you anything. Um, and so they re, said if you were passing when you went into this semester, then we're just going to let you pass. So that bottom score is also one that I would say is um, not based on the same thing that twenty one, twenty-two and twenty-two, twenty-three are based on. So um, it is, it, both of those are great percentages, but probably um, more realistic is that top one at eighty-two percent. So if, that means that if we had a hundred kids, eighteen of them did not graduate in their, in the four years. But the part to celebrate is that this district, one of my favorite things about it is it takes care of our seniors and then our fifth-year seniors. So ninety-three percent of our students either graduated in fourth, four years or using that fifth-year definition from the first or the second page. And that is amazing, that is higher than um, most of the state. And that means we've got something that we're doing right and we need to replicate that. Our enrollment has gone up, in, in fact, today we got another student, so um, if Kwanah's still on there, you can add one to that, we're back at, at just an even rate. And our attendance rate is sixty-six percent from last year, so six, sixty-six percent of our students missed less than seventeen days of school last year, which is, that's a lot of school. But that's how they're marking it and it's um, we're just going to have to go with it. So that's, that's a tendency, right marks. All right, Michelle, next slide, please. So this is our current data. So school-wide attendance data and we do it by ninety days. So I just said that this was our hundredth day of school, so ten days ago, our attendance, it was at ninety-two point one percent. And that is not the same data as the sixty-six percent. I'm trying to drive it home, but these are two pieces of different data. Regular attenders are how many have missed less than seventeen days and the ninety-two percent is just how many kids are going to school every day. So um, I don't know if there's any questions on that, for me, it's um, a strange way to measure attendance, so. In the black in that box below is from Mrs. Marshall's December presentation. And um, remember, we're trying to push goals, we're trying to have stretch goals that make us um, do a better job of keeping track of our, our attend, all the, all those pieces make for um, a good study year. Because if you're not at school, you're probably not learning as much as, except for the kid that just got the awards. He did a great job, not at school, but um, the kids that go to Almira need to be in class, do the labs. Um, just be part of the classroom so um, you're, you're able to pick up a little bit more than maybe if you just read it on your screen. So stretch goals, remember, are ones that we're trying to reach for. Baseline is our kiddos who um, we expect to do well. And then gap closing are, we call them focal groups, so it might be kiddos who have um, their low income. They're um, kids in a group that um, um, tends to not do well because maybe they're unhoused. So that gap closing one is the one we're looking at and trying to take care of those kids. Uh, I think we're on track to make that. The reason I wanted to point out how many kids play sports is that when you play a sport, your grades have to um, you have to pass five. Does it bother anyone that that twenty-eight is not in line with the rest of them? Oh, boy. Pretty sure it wasn't like that last night, okay, so um, in Almira, it's not the case uh, in my old district, but at Almira, if you don't go to school during the day, you don't go to practice, you don't go to school during a game, you don't play in the game. If you don't go to school on a Friday and the game's on Saturday, you don't play the game on Saturday. It encourages kids to go to school, it encourages parents to plan um, um, vacation days off on um, days that perhaps we're hoping they'll plan them. So this is a third, well, fall is a third of our kids, winter is a little less than that. Football has a lot of kids in it compared to um, the other sports, but um, those kids are encouraged daily, their grades are watched, their attendance is watched, and they are usually our kids that do well. So if we can get kids to be into an organized sport, then we know we've got a system that takes care of them. The asterix, um, that's a little bit of brag on my part, even though I didn't hire any of the coaches or, yeah, I just showed up. But we have um, five of our groups uh, went to state this year or, or parts of their groups to state or playoffs, so. All right, uh. One of my. What did you say the requirements were for sports? Five out of seven, you have to pass five.
So you can still fail to pass the five.
But if you've only got five, let's say you're a senior, you don't have a full schedule, then you have to pass all five.
And passing is a D or C?
It's a D.
And Keith, one other thing I'd add is the OSA requirement. If we only went by the OSA requirement, it's the previous semester. So I can come out for football, football or press country. And as long as in the spring, I ended up at, at Almira, we go a step further and we say, we're checking every four weeks to make sure you're still on track. So at the end of September, first week of October, we're first four weeks in, are you passing five? Yep, we're still getting built. It's not required by the OSA, we don't have to do that. Just an extra benchmark, we make sure our kids are on track all the way through that first semester for eight, twelve, sixteen weeks. Um, and if they get off track, then there's a process, okay, you're eligible for a week or two, like I remember the first time. So the OSA standard is passing five every semester and Almira, we check it every four weeks.
And what is the, so you don't pass, what's the?
Two weeks, um, so our teachers have to do their grades within two weeks, so that's good to get it.
And then if they're still not passing.
Then they're not.
For another two weeks.
Until they get their grades back.
Thank you. Sorry, I have to ask me.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm a firm believer that uh, the best way that we can get our kids active is by communicating with students, with families, with you, so you know what um, we're up to. Um, I know that you hear different things that we do, and so if you understand um, how to support kids, then um, that's good. So this was the night that we had a family night and then we had an open house after it, so we ordered pizza, we got them all, and I talked them into doing a selfie because um, it's fun and I enjoy taking pictures. I should have been a teenager with a camera and now I'm just a, you know, a principal with a camera. So um, we had a good turnout, it was a great turnout and I don't know if it was bribing pizza or what, but it worked. And some of you were there, so you saw the people and I think um, it filled in a little bit more after this, but. Uh, so one of my goals this year was to increase communication with families. That would be at, at evenings like this, at uh, when we have parent, teacher, guardian um, conferences so that when people are coming in, we're there, we're able to answer questions. And it also helps us build community because at those tables, some people were talking and they, they figured out that they could help each other with a couple of problems and that was schoology. So we really want our, our parents, kids don't want our, their parents to do this, but I want their parents to do this. It's to get onto schoology and to check grades a lot. So it shouldn't be any surprise if two weeks happens and you're an athlete and all of a sudden, you've got a couple of Ds and you're in danger of not playing right, parents should go as it, as it's going. So it is a bit of a process, you have to call the front office, beat your password and it's not something easy that you can just log into. But um, the parents who've done it find it that once they've got on, they can check all the time. So um, we keep trying to get parents to call us and then um, sometimes when they get the grades that semester, then they're calling us to say, remember how you wanted me to get that password I wanted, so. So um, another important part is that staff knows the data. So before I got there, they were used to meeting in groups. So they need, as a department, when we meet as a staff, we, they meet as departments as another, and then we have committee meetings. I'm on the graduation one, so I'm looking at seniors and um, like who's in danger, who do we really need to put effort into? And um, we have one that looks at just ninth graders, we have a safety committee, so all of those people are talking about kids. And I, I would say that there's not a kid in that school that doesn't have an adult that knows their name and knows their situation because they really do take that information and break it down. So um, staff knows the data and then our CTE programs. Sometimes I can, I'm going and looking at kiddo's grades and they're failing math, but they've gotten ninety-nine percent in the hardest grader in the whole school and that is our, our welding class. He expects a lot out of them and they can do it. So um, with that class, we know that um, CT, kids who are in a CTE program are more likely to graduate than those who aren't. If they're having a hard time with just that general ed part of the math, the language arts, the science. Um, because they're motivated to come to school, so we want to motivate kids to come to school. Athletics does that because they. Athletics does that because they can't miss school and and be in practice or the game. So what more can we do to do that? And I really think electives are huge and our clubs are amazing. So kids get to pick their clubs. They get to come to us and say, I want to have this club. And then they find some teacher who's willing to give up their lunch or after school, right after school to meet. And so what um just handed out, uh we work with Laney SD. So you Superintendent Carpenter, did they approve the plan with Laney SD? It's tonight. So the programs that come from Laney SD are imperative for some of the things that we do. And here's an example of one that works through them. And what it does is it, it shows kids the different sectors locally of things that they can work towards and be a part of. So in YTP that's towards the bottom, it's based, it's supposed to have kids that are um that have IEPs and we work to get them jobs into the community and um line them up. But what we found is that some kids want to go on those trips. And so if there's room, we've been letting them. Tomorrow, they go to Nike and Beaverton. They've gone and they've visited this place right here, Elevate Lane County, where they've built something on the three D printer. Um Gavin, what, when did you go to?
Go to Nike tomorrow.
Oh, you didn't go to one already? So we call these job shadows and they talk about uh what it takes to get there and what it takes to do that job right there. And I would like to see us do that for our welding, our shop and our, our um building. And we have community members who've reached out and said, hey, we want to hire someone that knows how to weld. Can we come in and um see your class? So I think that's super close. Then it also gives a kid a reason to um continue on with welding and get really good at it. Because they can leave high school and have a job as they walk out the door and sometimes even before they actually graduate. Um next slide. Okay, so remember, this is voluntary. Kids do not have to be part of these. And uh most of them are put together because either a kid had the idea or a teacher thought it would be cool. And kids said, yeah, I think that is cool. So IQ might be my favorite one to announce in the morning because they give out IQ questions that I try to answer on the daily announcements. And I'm not very good at it, but it's fun. Jess is one of our newest clubs. And so I was just in there the other day and I snapped this picture and it was cute because they didn't even pay any attention to me. Um the next one is Dungeons and Dragons. And I went to that one and that might be the biggest one. And it's after school and there's probably twenty kids in there in the library all playing a game. And and some kids that don't, I see during lunchtime who don't hang around with a lot of other kids are in there and they're socializing and it's really important to belong. And so these clubs provide each kid their own little outlet. And if, if someone came in tomorrow and wanted a different one, we'd, we'd find a way to make it happen. And the teachers are all sitting over here that are part, I think each one of these has their own club, that they just show up and maybe just sit in the back while the kids do their thing. But it's, it's just really important. So uh we've got to find ways to engage kids where they are and hopefully teach them some math and science and language arts and um make them want to come to school. All right, next slide. All right, so here's some electives and some fun things that we did over the course of the first semester. And uh in the upper left is YTP and they put together a coffee corner. And if you've gone to any of the games, you know that they've also opened up for uh the snacks. But people could come and buy. And they're trained. They have to get their food handlers permit. And some of them get jobs at coffee shops because they actually know how to make the fancy coffee and make the little leaky thingy in the coffee. It seems impressive to me. Lower left is our drama production. I saw some of you at the drama production. This is my favorite scene because the girls made up their, what they were doing there on the couch, moving over. One was getting into the other personal space and she kept moving over. And then it, anyway, it was really funny. So it caught my attention. We have foreign exchange students up on the top on the fire truck. Each one of their flags is on the side of it. We have seven this year. And um I would say they bring a lot to us. We might give them a lot just simply by being their host, but each one of them comes with their own culture. And it is fun to hang out with them, especially when it's something new that they haven't done before and they're trying to figure it out. And then you realize what it's like to be new. Down below, uh this was our music concert that happened at the end of the semester. And um they were really good. Went in their class this morning and teacher didn't know I was in there and he was singing with them. But he was singing loudly and maybe not as professionally as he would have had he known I was standing behind him. And so they have a great rapport with their teacher. And some of these kids show up for school for this class. Um we had a dress up day. It was, I want to say it was Barbie or pink day. Gavin might be able to tell me. It was pink day. And um I put this on there so you can see my slippers. They're hot pink and they match um the girl standing next to me. Uh there's an art and and it's a Hello Kitty coffee mug. And she's trying to make it just like the one that she has her water in. And maybe one of the most important things that we do that we don't um maybe talk about a lot is our free store. So there's food in there. There's um sanitary supplies. There's clothes. Um kids can come in and on dress up days, we'll have pink clothes in there for them to dress up so that they can be a part of the school. And we try to make it as normal as possible to go in there and get, get things um so that kids feel comfortable going in. And I know that some people in this room are people who donate to that room and I can't tell you thank you enough. So kids know there's food. They know that we're going to let them in there. And Amy, if we can have a hundred A's, the world would be a better place. So. Okay, next slide. All right, this is us. And this is uh the day after we won that trophy. Yes, that's right. We beat all of, all of uh the district. So the two elementaries in the middle school. Some say it was rigged. I say it wasn't. Um but we were showing off our, our trophy there. But the reason why this um is an important slide is that each one of these people brings something to different kids. And um you never know which one's gonna come to you and need something. And um this is an amazing group. They eat lunch together. They do things outside of school together. I just saw that they go camping together and I thought, oh, my goodness. I don't know that I want anyone seeing me with my hair washed. Um David Johnson on the end with his suspenders um is retiring this year, but he has kids that I swear show up for his class. And then he makes them stay the rest of the day because that's the deal. Um music is to the left of him with the glasses. And I know for sure that we have one student who um comes to school for music. So it's sometimes the magic is in the electives, the clubs, the athletic athletics. We also need to graduate. So the rest of it is important as well. So um in that group, I had my data and I don't know that I have it right here. There's twenty-three FTE. But we have Forrest and Jessica in there. So it's a little bit more than that. Forrest, you're in there, aren't you? No, I see you. You're right by David. Turns out. But he was there. And so it's a little bit more. But twenty-three FTE, that's um full-time equivalent. There's more teachers there than twenty-three, but um that's what we have at the school. And then a number of classified employees who um, you know, help kids on past tests that wouldn't if they didn't have one-on-one help. So um it does really take that village and it takes all of you to support us to make it happen. So um we're doing well. And it's nothing I did. I showed up and they were already doing well. But really, if the staff doesn't get along, um much less happens because they take care of each other so that they're able to take care of the kids when they walk through the door. Have any key you want to add, Superintendent Carpenter?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Welcome. He told me I had to sing and I told him no.
Two quick ones. Sorry, you might have said this already. For as far as the fifth year graduation goes, is that a modified diploma or do they get there regularly?
Could be a modified, could be a regular, could be your twenty-four credits, could be a GED. There's lots of ways to do that one, but they, the state does let us count it.
Ten kids just stay for a year.
It's both. Guess both of those.
Well, just to give an example, maybe a kid was only one class short in June, can't graduate. They took the one class in the fall. They could graduate at the end of the first semester. Another kid might be six whole classes short. So they're full schedule.
Yeah. Was, was that two?
Thank you. Next up is uh for education association.
Uh so first thing I wanted to talk about, um in case you weren't aware, classified week is March fourth to eighth. So I know all classified staff, we have several in the district and they're an integral part of each school. And we just want to thank and recognize all of the classified employees in our district. Um the next topic, uh assuming the school board moves forward, the school bond moves forward tonight. Teachers are hopeful that it passes for a multitude of reasons. If voters approve the bond, the district will receive a six million dollar grant from the match program. The Oregon School Capital Improvement Match on a sixteen million dollar bond. Amazing opportunity, you know? These bonds are for building, renovating and improving schools. Each school is going to see benefits that will support students, not only academically, but also improve school facilities as well as new and improved athletic fields. These are for the safety and security of our students too. As we all know, the community uses a lot of these areas, which is awesome. It would be a huge win and benefit to all. It's exciting times. And if we truly want what is best for our students, it is imperative that Priya and the community advocate to vote and support the bond on May twentieth. And then the final thing I just wanted to bring up, um we're just, some upcoming events around the school. So in case you didn't know, tomorrow's the hundredth day of school. And I learned at our executive team meeting tonight that at Elmira, uh everyone's dressing up like they're a hundredth. And I thought that was really cool. They're also hiding a hundred eagles that the students will find um throughout the day. Uh they're starting the itinerary. Uh we'll have teams with different grade levels. And there's an assembly this Friday for that. And there's a Benina versus Elmira Battle of the Books, third through fifth grade this Friday here at Elmira at nine thirty. At the middle school, Obam is going to be in Florence on March ninth. And they had a planetarium assembly, which sounded pretty cool. And the Sluggo Challenge, which a lot of students just completed. And those were for receiving some free M's tickets. And then at the high school, I was, I was hearing, it sounded like it maybe snowed a little bit, but today was the first day of spring sports. Uh which was a little bit ironic with the weather today. And that there's the staff versus students volleyball game on March seventh. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, our student representative to the board.
Most of what I had was all already used by these students. Spring sports started today. Staff volleyball, volleyball game is the seventh, it's a fundraiser for this new grand night so they can go on the grand night trip. That's a, was a fun game. So it's the juniors and seniors winners play the staff team. And then we have, you know, Brett Heiberg, the new uh back-to-back state champion in wrestling. And then um leadership has, I'm hoping to continue putting on their um City Hawkins dance the second. But we're still seeing if we can get enough people to want to come to the dance. We're a little short in the moment. So we don't get enough ticket sales. We want to uh cancel that dance um with this week. That'd be disappointing. Um yeah, that's all I had.
All right. Questions, questions for Gavin?
Okay, I'll try. Couple things, K two. It's been accepted. And then if they keep acting like three little revisions, I actually had a meeting with ODE last week. One was like the date didn't go in the Excel, right? So but they can't fix that on their own. They have to send it back to us and we have to fix it and say, yeah, that's what it's supposed to be. And then two other minor things. And then we were able to adjust the budget a tiny bit because we budgeted for twenty-three people to participate in the letters training. And we only had sixteen. So we're able to buy some really intensive uh curriculum for our high dosage tutoring program that will be next for next year. So that's kind of what I'm working on now is mapping that out, what the schedule looks like, what the FTE looks like, um what the programming looks like. Essentially, it's one-to-one, one-to-two or one-to-three. So three or less kids, at least thirty minutes a day, at least three times a week for at least ten weeks. So really like finding those kids that need just that extra push, really intensive. Um I think it'll be really strong. So working on that planning, science adoption, our K-12 teams are still just plugging along. I don't know that I go one day without an email about science. Uh my goal for March, what is to have to, at, at least share with you guys in my board report or update um the top two samples for each grade, K five, six, eight, nine, twelve. So that you can see what their two top choices are. We're all, we're very close. Um integrated plan, I submitted our quarter two reports um February twenty-third. And essentially I had to just update the budget and review all of our progress markers, which are we making growth towards this twelve different things the state wants you working towards? Um we had a team attendant event at LCC. Sid talked a little bit about career connected learning. And uh just knowing what professions are out there and how to really work backwards so that our kids have a broader view of the workforce and what they can do. We had the Heart of the Community event at the NIDA on February fifteenth. We had over twenty-five community partners attend. It was pretty amazing how many people want to support this community and be a part of our programming. Um our attendance wasn't great, but our girls had a play, play-in game at the high school. And so I think that took a little bit. So we're just taking notes for next year. We'll do it again. We had a K-five team of ten folks um attended, were in response to instruction and intervention. And it was all about looking at data and using data to reflect on your English Language Arts programming. We have a math team that's working with ODE and Laney SD to work on Oregon State interim assessments to help prepare those kids for the state testing. And then Ms. Perry and I have started our program planning for summer already for K-five and kids. And that's about it. In a nutshell.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, moving on to the superhand. Two things to touch on. One, we have three job fairs coming up in the next two months. We'll be attending. We're this year going to U of O Job Fair, Western Oregon Job Fair and Portland uh Job Fair, which is large one in the state. And lastly, a reminder, next school boards meeting will be your second update. You'll get from Ms. Marshall and myself on the, on our board goals, so officials in December. Uh second point, we'll be looking at those markers that you heard Principal Handicar talk about, ninth grade on track, attendance, third grade reading, four-year, five-year graduation rate. Uh that'll be at the, at the next board meeting. And you know, Sid had a report tonight for the high school. Already heard from Westlake and Tech. Uh the next three months, we'll hear from the other preschools, just to remind the middle school. Uh moving on to discussion items. First up is the Laney SD Service District Year Two, which does require a board.
I move that we uh accept resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-four slash oh three. Uh the Laney Education Service District Year Two of the plan.
Motion is in a second to uh approve resolution twenty-three dash twenty-four slash zero three. Any discussion? If you're none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Uh next up is uh the General Obligation Resolution twenty-three dash twenty-four slash oh four, General Obligation Bonds. Uh to put the bond on the name. Mr. Rose is online in case you have any questions, but I think you have the language for these two things that need to be passed. Um first one is just that we're going to go out. And the second one is the specific language and the bond. Is that the right way to characterize those, Mr. Rose?
Yes, it is.
So we can start with the resolution itself first. Which is twenty, twenty-three, I think that's second, the one, the paper we have with us is that second thing. Yeah, okay. That's okay. So we do need a motion for resolution twenty-three dash twenty-four slash zero four.
So I just want to say ahead of time, um, I, so, the last time we passed the bond, um, it had, it was the third try and when I woke up the following morning of the election and realized, oh, we passed the bond, I was so happy for our students because the community had said, we make you a priority and, um, I just was, I just, our students are our future and why won't we, why couldn't, why shouldn't we give them every possible advantage and opportunity? With that said, I move that we, uh, pass resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-four slash oh four. A resol- the resolution of Burnridge School District twenty-eight J, calling a measure election for general obligation bonds and related matters.
I'll second.
The motion is second to pass resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-four slash oh four, I'm not going to read the rest of that. Um, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So next is some specific language that I think Andrew is just going to make the motion for.
I resolved to put a bond issue to the voters on May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four and resolve to adopt the proposed language attached to resolution twenty-three slash twenty-four dash oh four.
Can you second?
Yeah.
I'll second.
So we have a motion in a second, uh, with the specific language of, uh, to put the bond issue to the voters on May twenty-second, May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four and resolve to adopt the proposed language attached to resolution twenty-three dash four, dash zero four. Any discussion? If you're none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, all right. Do we need anything else, uh, Mr. Rose?
Uh, no, that is it, the, uh, uh, bond legal counsel will file, uh, the documents or they will compile the documents for the district to file, uh, tomorrow. And those need to be filed by the end of the day, Thursday.
So.
And I'll, I'll facilitate that process here over the next day.
Yeah, so Carol Mafugue's lady, her, her team will be filling out the exact form, I think it's SEL eight, nine.
Eight oh five. Mm-hmm.
Um, they'll get it to me, since they do end it a Thursday, I'll probably, I hope I can get everything by Wednesday. Go down Wednesday to elections office, call over paperwork. Um, and hopefully by the end of the day, Wednesday, I'll let you know. That'll be fine. All right, thanks Scott.
All right, thank you.
Next on the list is, um, a motion to, uh, twenty twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, ODE is granted, uh, all school districts in the state, that fourteen hour instructional time waiver uh, per OAR five eight one dash zero three, that's two three two zero. Uh, we do require board action for this and that just means that we won't have to make up as much time as we would have as of the, um, the ice.
Right, so in, uh, last, the department that's last meeting, they made this official. Um, but as a part of that, we have to request, the format to fill out. Uh, one of the requirements is that board discussed it and approved, need to apply for this waiver that every district in Oregon will be applying for. Um, if we did not apply for this waiver, uh, so our K eights, we still wouldn't need to add time. Um, but at the high school, we would, uh, without these fourteen hours, which then would result in, um, you know, us extending the school year, uh, by a day or two. The high school has done a couple of things, um, to help, uh, second semester and gain around ten hours, I think, the primary one being, um, increasing each class, uh, length by a, by a minute. Um, anyhow, with this fourteen hour waiver, uh, we will be in compliance with Division twenty-two when it's combined uh, with what high school is already doing for second. If it's not approved, you'll be hearing from me next month to add two days of.
So are there any curriculum that will be cut short due to our students not getting that part of that training and teaching?
Teachers will just adjust what they're doing, adjust timelines. Um, we extended, uh, another thing we did internally, if you recall, we extended first semester by a couple of days so that both the semesters were relatively balanced. Um, and when we know this, four months ahead of time, teachers can adapt.
The motion is second to approve the twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four fourteen hour instruction time waiver per OAR five eight one dash zero three, then two three two zero, any discussion? If you're none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Next up is the first reading of the proposed twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five calendar. So it's just a first reading, uh, if for some reason you have any questions tonight, I'm not going to answer them, but if not, um, definitely contact Gary about those in between time or anytime, uh, at the meeting next meeting. Right. All right. Next on the list, uh, superintendent evaluation. Um, this is just on there, just to confirm that what we are doing this time, uh, for the superintendent evaluation is to, we're going to use the tool that we've used in the past. Um, and then, um, and Michelle will send those out, I believe.
Correct.
And for us to go out and get back to her so she can, um, put it all together and then in the April meeting, is that correct? I think a meeting, we'll have an executive session to discuss, um, that evaluation. Knowing that in the future, we may do something different, um, which we can start working on in May or June or July, um, if we wanted to, uh, contract with OSBA to do a more targeted, um, evaluation or, um, parts of what they offer, um, it'd just be up to the board at that time that this gets started early on for the process next year. Any questions on that or?
I have some questions.
Okay.
So, um, I've got the one, two, three, four, five, there are six different, um, categories for the superintendent evaluation. And I get it and I agree that we approve to use the format for, we'll use the format that we already have this year and then talk about next year. And a lot. My concern is that going through these, my understanding now is that the way that I can, um, do the superintendent evaluation, which I love evaluations, they're great tools, okay? But I can use the material for what I've known up to this point. So for relationships with the board, I can go on that one, meeting relationships. Um, business and finance, I can do a little research on that one. But there are some that I, some that I have that I'm concerned about. One is the staff and personnel relationship. The educational leadership and the values and ethics of leadership on the superintendent. And I was wondering if we could, um, pass tonight to have a survey that would go out to staff and personnel, just on these three topics. That way, that gives us a little bit of insight on, on what's going on, I mean, those are not things of need, these are things of staff and personnel. And I'd like to have something to be able to, uh, use and document.
I think my only, um, hesitation on that would be that, uh, first of all, we don't, we have a short timeline. Um, and, and to be able to come up with questions for a survey, uh, it wouldn't be able just to be a blanket one, I don't think, because, um, really the, the administrators, you know, that work closely with, uh, the superintendent have probably the best idea of what exactly his job is. Um, and the teachers, I think too, at some, that's some, to some extent, and the, and the instructional assistants are certified staff, um, or the classified staff. But I think to be able to come up with, uh, questions that, um, would be for those fewer specific groups or even blanket questions in general enough, I just don't know if we have enough time to do those. Um, we've done staff surveys in the past, uh, not specifically for any evaluation, but just as a staff survey. And it does take a bit of time for them to be, usually they give them time during, uh, PD or, uh, Wednesday to fill those out to during model working. Um, but that's just, like I said, that's my opinion about that. Um, I, I've always found in the past that, uh, the questions that we're going to use, um, I've been able to answer them pretty well. Um, with the information that I've just gathered, um, throughout the year.
So who would put together survey? Who, who does that? I know the surveys go out all the time.
Well, it depends on what the surveys are about, it's, you know, I mean, um, we have surveys that have gone out, uh, to the community that we have that you've, that you've gotten results from, um, that have some, have to do with some of the things you're talking about. And so we already have some of those, um, some of that data.
So my question is, is there one person or are there many people that could serve this?
There, there could be multiple people, the way I, the way I see it.
So in talking about the superintendent evaluation, saying we have documentation on how the board looks, who would pick that survey?
Well, in conjunction with the board, someone, staff.
So, and how long would it take? I can't see that.
Could it just be like a simple one to ten available comments optional survey, just to make it like, make it easy to give? So our concern is like newer boards, we don't, we don't have a lot of information, we don't feel like to face our evaluation.
I think for a survey to go out, uh, basically you need someone to, um, gather that data, put it in some format that it makes sense. You don't just send a survey out and you go through each line and each person responds. Survey, you have to gather the data, put it in some fashion that ranks and put other substance towards that, so. But again, um, you know, if, if I'm doing a survey and something, some question is there that I'm not familiar with, I just write in, I'm not familiar and I don't rank it. That's all I do it. So it's, it's open to each person's, you know, what, what relationship you have since you've been here, what information is available to you. And if you're not feeling comfortable with the information you have for that particular question, you'd be right, you know, constable. Anything there.
So these are, these are, with the, um, evaluation that we have, it's already laid out. It's not like we have to come up with the questions, it's already laid out with those two subjects, there's seven, I'd say between five and seven questions on each, each one, so that work is already done.
So, um, the, what, what many, um, laypeople don't understand about survey design is that, um, there are, there are, these are not actually appropriate for surveys of, of the staff. Um, so for example, uh, develop and execute sound personnel procedures and practices, so that would, that would be a group of questions. So we would have to decide, okay, what questions do we need to ask in order to be able to say that the, the, the staff does or does not agree with that?
Well, it, it, it's not a matter of whether they're giving up, they just want to, um, score, uh, one through five. You know, I don't, I don't know which way exactly goes, but one, the lowest, five, the highest, uh, or however it wants to be done. But I think it's very interesting that the questions are already here. If there, if there's many sections to question one, I don't understand why we're not getting many sections, question one.
I'm sorry, Lisa, I, I can't explain it in a, in a, uh, in an efficient manner. And, um, I'm sorry that I spoke out.
No, I, I agree that you spoke out. So I'm going to ask then the board, is there, is there anybody else that understands if, uh, category number one is one question? And Andrea was saying that in that one question, there's actually four or five questions. Okay, so I'm just not understanding how it would be different from the staff to be able to get, um, their point of view from it and their aspect of point of view. I really want to have somewhat of an educated, um, I'd like to have some kind of documentation, to be honest with you. To, um, this is my first evaluation, I love evaluations, I think evaluations are absolutely.
But what are you talking about, documentation? I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Well, if I, if I understand what she's saying, like Barbara said, then if we're not comfortable answering the questions, then just put an A. But to me, that wouldn't be doing my job, like, I would like some information to be able to answer a question.
So I don't want to just click. If you send that survey out as is, all right, and that person put in number five versus the number four or number two, what is that telling you?
That's telling me that that one person feels that way. So if we have, how many staff members do we have personnel?
Let's just say a hundred and fifty.
Okay, so a hundred and fifty, if we got back fifty percent, that would be seventy-five, but if they're not going to be, I hope they're not all going to be the same. Okay, so that gives a little bit of insight, yes, I can absolutely go on what I have seen, what I have talked to people about, but this is an evaluation.
Should that be what's your judgment, your, your, your?
Scoring.
Scoring is based on your observation, what you have seen, heard in having a dialogue, shouldn't it be?
But I feel that it's so, so little, I have had very, very little time with the superintendent. We've only been doing this since four, September.
I would, I guess I would say that probably, uh, the people answering the questions that we send it out to are feeling the same way.
What do you mean?
That they, they have very little time with the superintendent, I mean, how much time does a classified person or a certified person in the district? Um, or even, uh, yeah, spend, spend with Mr. Carpenter to be able to answer those questions.
Well, it could come from like a form of leadership though, like, right, like, when I was employee here, I didn't spend very much time with him, right? But I had an idea of how he was as a leader. So it could be like, if we're getting seventy-five twos, that would be concerning over seventy-five four-fives, like it would still give us some umbrella of an idea.
I, I think it's wonderful too, I've thought about this a lot, um, and we've had discussions. And so I did go through this and I was, went through each and every, um, section and I said, I can do that, I can do that. But the three that I had, um, concern about would be staff and personnel relationships, educational leadership and the values and ethics of leadership.
So would that be a research for you, whether you speak with, maybe, I, I'm just thinking out loud, um, with the, um, principal or leadership within those particular schools to say, you know, give me your take on the relationship with the superintendent and your staff, would that be an avenue to take? I don't know. As a part of your research to gather data, like, would it be feasible? As a part of your research to gather data, like, would it be feasible or, I don't know, welcome to do? Where you're meeting probably with the principal for that building, right? And, and get some time with that person to say, give me feedback, the same feedback that you would want to send on a survey. Get that meeting with that principal and get a feedback regarding how superintendent interacts with the staff. Because they would know, they would have a clue with the various meetings he has with the team. How he's perceived, how some of those questions can be answered. I don't know if that's an option.
So actually, that is a, a good option. I, I'm liking both of those. My problem is I haven't even been able to see Sid yet, because I'm in the booth, so I'm not trying anything else for weeks.
Phone call, email, phone call.
I, I was, I'm a, I'm a.
Well, that is your way of doing it. You have a, you have a route to take, and you may choose to do face-to-face or email or whatever. But that's an avenue for you to take. I think what we're looking at within the timeframe that we currently have. To send the survey out, gather the data, make sense of that data, put it in a format, it's equally shared as one unit will take time, right?
And so I'm asking how much.
I don't know. I mean, as, as a, so staff in, you know, various positions, I have had to do that. It varies. Oh, how much time are you gonna give for that survey to be responded to? It varies, right? So two weeks, say two weeks, that comes back, someone gathers the data, put it in a form, get it before you. And whatever. It could be two, three weeks. Maybe the first two weeks, you got little response. Now you extend it another week, so you get more, promote it some more. It varies. There's no set time for a survey.
If we're on a time crunch now, right, we would only give them so much time to get those back or whatever we have back, is what we use.
So and then, oh, how fair would it be if you get ten back and you make a decision based on the ten you get out of, say a hundred and something?
It gives me a little bit more insight.
Okay, but I think you can get that same insight from talking to the principal or meeting with, within that group of leadership that you guys have talked about.
I actually agree with that, but in my eyes, this is just one avenue. You have your principals, your teachers, your IAs. You have all, everybody else.
Is that something that can look at for the next, like, you talk about, for the new process coming up?
No, I, I'd like to do it. I'd like to do it this time. Uh it was when I was going through everything, I was saying, there's no way. Um. I, there, there's just no way.
So out of those three questions, you basically have no answer. You, you would not be able to rate superintendent on. You have no information at all from your observation or in conversation with different members of the staff.
So my, my operating, because I have very little with the staff. Okay, I, I have very little to do with the staff, and with mostly the personnel stuff like that. Um so. Yeah, I, I'm still at the point of being able to do. Observe, you know, about how long.
Uh it's definitely a process. Um I'll often draft something, share it, share it with Lani SD leaders, get input. Make sure that I'm asking the right question for what I want the response, you know, like. They're very subjective, so if somebody interprets something a certain way, you want to make sure that you're gonna get, they're thinking the same question, we're on the same page. So it, it can be a challenge, for sure. And I've had my fair share of terrible surveys, too. It's, I would not want to write this in a very short time.
Well, it's actually already done. But the, the language is already there.
Yes, as long as the language is not subjective to the person reading it. Right? You want to make sure that the person reading it understands what you mean by ethical leadership. What's an example of an honest approach? What's a four? What's a one?
Well, yes, that would be.
And how do we make sure we have a rubric for that scale? So that what a five should be is a five to Sid and a five to.
It would be right on there. It's just like the same, not, it's not, it's not. So you have a one to five, one being the least, five being.
But what is, what's least?
Uh five would be significantly above.
But what, what would make it a five? Like, you know what I'm saying?
What are you writing?
Um I, I do wonder, I don't know, maybe I'm overstepping, but like the Oregon Tell Survey just came out. And that is public information, and that was our teachers. Not every district in the state was able to get the data from that. But enough of our staff participated and. I don't, I think Gary's already shared that with you guys, but there is leadership pieces on there and other things that might be helpful. Okay, and what was that? I'm, I'm pretty sure it's the Oregon Department of Education Tell Survey. I was trying to find it just to see if I could.
Tell, so.
Yeah, you. I can find it. Anyone?
Summarize it all.
So it's still telling.
And, and they don't have information about how um teachers, staff members, personnel.
I sent it, I sent it out. We also have a survey out right now. We can share data later. My only two cents on this is a, um a survey of staff, uh could be good. Um not opposed to it, although know that that is not something I would do to any of my employees. I wouldn't tell them three quarters of the way through the school year, this is how I'm gonna evaluate. This should be done in June, July, when you set goals, and you say, I'm gonna evaluate. Uh teachers know in August, this is our evaluation process, this is what we're doing. Um to do this now in March, uh is not the way it should be done. So. Board wants to do it. My only, my only um uh strong suggestion would be, I don't create this survey. District staff doesn't create it, we just reach out to OSBA. Uh I'm sure they have plenty, like, cost us a little bit of money, and to get one, and they could help facilitate it. But again, this really should be something discussed at the front end with the evaluation cycle. It starts in July. Um we establish, this is what we're gonna do for the next school year. We're just looking at feedback from staff. Uh that Tell Survey has a lot of data. Uh I compiled it all and sent it to all the school board members. If you want the raw data, I can get you that. It's a lot, a lot more information. We also have this current survey out, that's being done, you know, filled in by community members and staff. Um that might have some information, you know, which I would share that.
I.
That's my.
Okay, I would love that. Now, I do want to go ahead and say that um when this came up for discussion before. Um and we did approve to use, my thought was that we would use this, this form, which this form is just fine to, to use. Um but I, I'm still a little bit concerned now, especially the new board member. Um we're not getting documentation that they needed to make. So if, if we can get those things, I think that would be great. The other thing that uh we have talked about is the exit interviews.
Right, and I mean, my thought on the exit interviews is that um if we, we've had, that six people leave, we've had three people fill them out. Um if we wait uh and use that data for next year, um like in July, we'll potentially have other people leaving between now and then. Especially at the end of the year, uh and so we may have actually more data than three. So I just don't think that. Using that right now, um I'm not opposed to you getting the information, I just don't think to use three people um and. I mean, yeah, why do people leave? I mean, people leave for so many various reasons. Um we should definitely just pick a time or two times. Hey, we're gonna show this data with the board, June and December, or February and November, or whatever. Just so we know, and then it can be something that Michelle does. I'm not really involved in it. Staff don't believe, she sends them the link. I know she also tries to follow up with them multiple times um in talking with Sid, who, you know, they did these in 4J and some others who think that is. There are always gonna be poorly, uh not a high percentage of people are gonna fill them out. In fact, we got half, because actually I think it's pretty good. It's long-term, we're not gonna have half of the people fill these out. Uh so my only request on these things is, just the board identify the month, once a year that you want all this data, or twice a year. And we'll just make that the standard, and those who do the most, they'll share that.
Okay, so I, I think all of that is wonderful, but I really would like to stay on, ask it, is the evaluation, because that is coming up soon, first. So what we had talked about, or what you had said that we would do before, was that you would have a um. You would compile all the materials and then have a, a master for us, I think. In May, May or June it was. Um so I'm concerned about, I, I don't know why this is such a big, big deal, but um. What I'm, what I'm asking is that we can get information um from personnel and from staff. Um on regard, on the superintendent, we have an evaluation coming up.
Yeah, I, I know, this, I've done it through it six times already, and so I, I fully understand where you're coming from, and, and I filled that out six times. Without any of the information you're asking for, um even my first time without that information. Um and if I wasn't able to answer the questions like Barbara talked about, then I wouldn't be able to answer them. But I felt pretty confident that I had enough information to answer those questions, so that's just my opinion, I don't know about it with the health, but. So I'm not seeing the urgency in doing what you're asking.
It wouldn't be as urgency if we had talked about before. It would, it would have been urgency. You, you, you know, it's just like um the kids. You want the kids to do something, you have to give them the tools to be successful. We, the board, have an evaluation to do. And I feel that we should be able to be given the tool that we need to be able to help our superintendent be successful.
I think some of us think we've actually have enough tools already for that.
Oh, I, I believe that, but I'm saying that you're new to school board members.
And I was a new school board member, I thought I had enough tools for that, too, also, but I just.
But we don't, but we don't.
So the, the question is whether or not the survey that was already sent that is Marshall referenced. And that we should have already received in some form, will answer your question. I would suggest you check that and see whether or not that is gonna answer your question, and then in a second. Option is meeting with the, 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 the department heads or the, the school heads and, and talk with them and gather your feedback.
So, so can we then, can we then use those two tools? I'm, I'm good with that. I'm really good with that. Those two tools and the exit interviews.
No, we should not use exit interviews.
It's not.
Because, because first of all, the exit interviews were not identified as a source. That you use for reviewing.
Reviewing the superintendent.
Superintendent evaluation. And there are only three exit interviews. That, that is an N of nothing.
Okay, so what, oh, please tell me, Michelle, if you're able to, on that first. The tell.
Yes.
Okay, on the tell survey, how many people responded?
We had to have a certain percentage to even get this survey.
I don't have it off the top of my head, but I sent every board member that information, how many responded. I would compare it to the state board, and I'll resend it tomorrow. Again, I took all the data and summarized it into one table. I'll, we send that to you, and I'll also send you all the data, just in time.
And so my concern here is what percentages are those? You know, just like we're saying, the exit interviews.
Yeah, forty, like, it was over forty percent of our staff.
We're saying that exit interviews are only three people out of six, and I get that, I, I agree with that. Um so I would guess I would want to know what percentages did we get back on these two different surveys?
That's more than three.
So in general, a response rate of fifty percent is considered. Really good in social science.
Right.
However, there has to be enough of an N to be able to. Do an average. I mean. That. I, I didn't come prepared to talk about this tonight, but. The exit interviews just are not, there's not enough of. Variance within the possible responses. There's only three people.
But also, if you're looking to evaluate the, the superintendent, did you have questions on that? Exit interview that was in line to evaluate him?
I have not, I had, that's more like, I have not seen.
You're, you're looking to use data from an exit interview, for you to use that data to answer your question. Did you have questions on that? Not you personally, but were there questions on that survey? That was in line to evaluate the superintendent?
I have no idea, because we have not.
But you're asking to use the data. So you can't ask to use something if you don't know it's gonna answer your question.
But I can, because it's coming from staff and board personnel.
But you don't know what questions were on it, whether or not it's gonna answer the questions, and you're struggling.
So an exit interview isn't for the board, it's for the staff doing the hiring of those people that left, which is not us. So the questions that are asked aren't, aren't gonna have any really, I mean, yeah, they can maybe say something about the superintendent. But it's not gonna be, it's, it's not for us to use as a board. It's for the staff who are hiring people that are leaving to use in the future. Either on um interview panels, resident interview questions, um as things that they need to address, um you know. With individual groups or individual positions, but not for us, because we just hired the superintendent. So, but that, but, so those exit interviews weren't designed for the board. That's what, that's what Barbara's talking about. They weren't designed for the board. Now, it's good information to just look at, I guess, um but it's not necessarily information, the questions that are asked aren't for us, or for this process.
But it is good information.
Sure, but we get lots of things that are good information that we're not gonna use um to evaluate the principal on, like, just to not, or the superintendent on. Just like the, the presentation tonight, we had great information about our high school, but we're not gonna use. Maybe some of that information to evaluate in line, but not really, I mean. Because. I mean, it's not, the presentation wasn't for that.
I don't agree with that.
Well, that's fine, you can disagree, it doesn't bother me at all. I might say a lot of things that people disagree with.
Um, you know, a, as it is, because I can ask for information and, you know. Some of these I can. I know that I can go through the past months of enrollment, look at that. I can go through the past months of finances and look through that, and that's gonna be time consuming, that's absolutely fine. Well, I, I, I guess I said my piece, and I, I'd like to um still put it to a vote and uh see what happens with that.
You have every right to make a motion.
Okay, I would like to make the motion then, to be able um for the school board. To have access to the, the tell survey, the second survey. And I'm still not a hundred percent sure why we can't have the exit interviews.
So what's, okay, so you need to define your motion. So we're gonna get, we're already gonna get, we already have the information from the Tell Survey, and you're gonna get that already. And we already can, we can get the information from the survey that's um out there. So that, those are already things that are happening. So what, do you want to make a motion on that's not happening? So go ahead and do your motion.
So I uh make a motion to include the exit images as part of the documentation for the superintendent's evaluation.
Okay. Got a motion.
I'll second it.
Got a motion second to include the um exit interview information as uh to use for the superintendent evaluation, any other discussion. All of whom favor, say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, say nay. Nay.
Nay.
Motion does not carry. Anything else on the superintendent evaluation?
Oh, I do. You might have already said this, but when we begin the survey.
Didn't see the exact date, I just said that Michelle will be sending them out. The ones that you have in your hand right there. That one you're talking about.
Oh, this?
Yeah.
No, this is, this is the evaluation four. This is my survey, this is the evaluation.
What survey are you talking about? Oh, you already have, well, you have it, but Gary said you'd send it out.
Oh, resend it tomorrow.
Yeah. Any other discussion on superintendent violations? Moving on to personnel. Uh so license and employees resignation, new hires, transferred, other. We do have um one resignation affected June thirtieth. We have a retirement effective July thirty first. We have three, four hires. I wanted to just mention real quickly, uh I haven't really done a post about this, but I will in the coming days. We have hired Ms. Latums replacement in the elementary, I have a committee of seven folks. Uh that interviewed um principals. Uh her name is Dawn Dean, uh comes to us from Presswell. And she will have big shoes to fill replacing Ms. Laton, but we will help her out. All right, so this does require board action.
Approving the hiring.
Approving all the licensed employee resignation hires. So nine, one, eight, one through nine, eight, six.
I move that we approve the license of police resignation, hires, transfers, and others, nine, eight, one through nine, three, six.
The motion is second to prove uh the licensed employee resignation, hires, transfer, others, nine, eight, one through nine, eight, six, any discussion? Hearing none, who was in favor, say aye.
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 The opposed, motion carries five, zero. For information, the non-licensed personnel report. You have some hiring of um classified employees as well as coaches. Any questions on that? Hearing none, any late items or further comments? So some upcoming events that were not mentioned at least twice already. At March nineteenth, uh there's a PT meeting at Elmer Elementary's clock. Um the final OBOB battles are set February twenty-third, but I thought someone was going to the finals. I saw it, it already happened.
No, but that's March first in the Vinita top.
Top team at Vinita, they had their final one. Oh, they had their final, okay. So they're moving on.
So they're they're coming over here on March first to battle the top team even here.
Just for practice. Oh, for practice.
Just for practice.
But we do have a team that's moving on in the process.
Yes, there are actually two teams. Actually, there should be four.
Uh March sixth, uh PALS meeting at five o'clock at Need Elementary. There's a seventh grade boys' basketball for Oak Ridge on the twenty-eighth. Um and I believe that's all the information. If there's no, no objection, then we are adjourned.